Okay, trying again. Can you hear us?
Very good.
Okay, um, let's try that one down. Make sure to make sure. Can you hear me? That's working? It works?
Yeah, I don't know.
It's on. You'll have to talk directly into it. Feel free to turn toward you. Alright, folks, thank you for coming this evening. We're gonna get started with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna start with our call. Mark, here. Dale, here. Mike, here. Howard, here. Gwen, Amber, John, Nathan.
Here.
And Christina, our newest member. Alright, tonight we need to actually swear Christina in. Um, and I think Nathan's got something prepared here, so we'll get her sworn in.
We do thank you, Mr. President. Christina, welcome to the Star County Plant Commission. We're gonna begin and officially get you onboard. There is a oath that's required. Here's who wanna raise your right hand. How about I just say, you just say I do it, and you agree with me? Alright. I, Christina Alexander, we solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Indiana, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the Star County Plant Commission according to the law, best skill, and ability.
I do.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, and for the record, folks, Christina is here for filling the perdue extension. So we're happy to have her, and it's been making for a few months now. Decided to have her back with us. I'm gonna lead with approval of the minutes from November. I believe Amber has a copy here. Everything from the funding meeting, we think to approve. We have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? None who passes? Alright, Gwen, do you have something here for us?
Excuse me, everyone. My name is Gwen Ress. I'm a part of the county committee. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone for coming tonight. Um, there's been a lot of effort that went into organizing this tonight, and we appreciate all the staff within the office and the planning commission board, and all the assistance that we received throughout the course. So, um, thank you.
Alright, Dale?
My name's Dale Turner. Just reprimanded tonight. We're all here for public hearing to discuss a moratorium on hyperscale data centers in Star County. Proposed moratorium.
Say yeah!
Is that better?
Yes!
You want me to start over?
Yes!
Alright. So my name is Dale Turner. Tonight we're all here for public hearing to discuss a moratorium on hyperscale data centers in Star County. The proposed moratorium is twelve months that will allow twenty point six plant commissions to develop their respective ordinance. This plant commission does ask that the public do respect what the votes would differ opinions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna also mention, um, since this is our last meeting of the year, there are board seats. If you're unhappy with how things are going and wanna make a difference, apply through the plant commission office down with Amber or John. For our upcoming year, the commissioners will be making those votes in our first meeting with the union. Uh, for the consideration of the venue, all the folks that are involved with putting this together, uh, security and so forth, uh, we do have intentions of having this meeting over by ten PM. If for whatever reason the meeting is not over by ten PM, we will have to, uh, vote to continue that on at another time, and we'll have to pick a location, uh, that suits us. I-I'm confident we'll get there, but, uh, I just wanna put that out. We do have a goal to be done by ten PM. And with that, I'm gonna pass along to, uh, Nathan, our new council down here. He's going to advise what the next steps of this process are gonna look like, what we're here to discuss, and the, uh, public contact expected from the folks in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everyone for coming this evening. Events like these are good reminders to all of us that in a democratic republic in which we live, political activity just does not happen in early November, but it is throughout twelve months, years. Thanks everyone for your active participation here this evening. Uh, as was referenced before, the purpose of the meeting this evening is for the plant commission to consider a favorable or non-favorable recommendation of Star County plant commissioners to engage in a temporary moratorium on the development of hyperscale data centers. There's recognition by your public officials that there is new and emerging land uses here in the state of Indiana, and more locally here in Star County. And what typically and oftentimes is the case is that the technology quickly runs far in front of what the current status of the law is. There's a present recognition that this plant commission, and I can't speak in behalf of commissioners, but perhaps them as well, that the plant commission needs time to assess our existing zoning law, as well as time to assess a comprehensive plan, and assess how that relates to emerging energy and technology land uses. So the purpose of the proposed ordinance this evening is for a recommendation then to the county commissioners, and the anticipated resolution is to place a one-year moratorium on the application of or building of any data center systems provided the main structure is in excess of five thousand square feet. And perhaps you've had opportunity to review the proposed ordinance and proposed resolution, but I'll take the time just to read through it right now. Hyperscale data project should be understood to be a building structure in excess of five thousand square feet. Its primary purpose and design is to house data center equipment or software which is used for processing, storage, retrieval, or other communication of data. And the proposed moratorium agreed as follows. There is now imposed a temporary moratorium and the issuance of full receipt of an improvement location permit or related application for any structure related to any hyperscale data center project. Yours was really, really critical. Including, but not limited to, any related storage facility, water conservation systems, cooling systems, or data centers, or buildings, and all appurtened facilities in all zoning districts in the unincorporated areas of Star County pending adoption of an ordinance emitting the Star County zoning ordinance provide regulations related there too. Effective upon the date of the adoption, this would continue for a time period not to exceed one year. So again, the purpose of the public conversation this evening, and subsequently, is whether or not the plant commission, county commissioners should engage in a one-year moratorium that we have time to assess our existing zoning laws. Now, as I reflected before, we're going to receive input from the public here shortly. That's been why this has been improperly noticed. That's why we're inviting everyone here this evening. And the plant commission wants to hear from you as to whether or not they should adopt this one-year moratorium. Again, we thank everyone for coming out this evening. I, myself, am a landowner here in the state of Indiana. I get the privilege of sitting both on this side of the diocese, as well as representing folks like you before municipal boards of zoning and the plant commissions, and I appreciate the passion and the energy that is going to be brought here this evening. My request to the board is that we'll take notes as comments are being drafted. These are comments that we can take into consideration, not only this evening, but again, anticipated in the next twelve months as we look at expanding and developing our ordinances regarding this particular sector of our zoning code. Before we go too much further as well, uh, keeping it here to the railroad, it's my understanding that there's been some conversations as to whether or not you have a board member who is particularly passionate for or against, in this case, a data center, whether or not Indiana state law would prohibit them from participation in that vote this evening. We've reviewed the administrative code, and when it comes to a decision like the board is going to make this evening, which is a legislative decision, not a quasi-judicial decision, when it's a legislative decision to enact an ordinance which is going to propose development of our ordinances, in that case, Indiana state law indicates that you are not prohibited from conversing in that conversation and even participating in the vote. However, if there was pending before us someone who had an application, and they were looking to get it approved and adopted based upon existing ordinances, and there is a person out there who's adamantly pro or or against, and politically advocating for or against it, that person would be restricted from participating in that conversation. But that's not the conversation that we have here this evening. The conversation this evening is whether or not for a pause, a timeout, on someone applying for a data center, and then subsequently to develop an ordinance, and there is no prohibition against that person who feels particularly strong for or against politically to participate in that this evening. Lastly, for the past fifteen years, I've been privileged to observe and participate and act on behalf of folks, and I'm confident looking forward to this evening. Having Luke Kander before, as we received comments, I'm going to request that we all respect the opinions of others. It's what makes our great democratic republic so amazing and to be a part of. I'm going to appreciate that many of us are gonna come from varying backgrounds and experiences, and perhaps be closer to various developments or other developments, and have feelings for or against. But our request this evening is that we all respect the feelings and opinions that are being granted. I anticipate here shortly the board may place a timeline because we have so many people here this evening. Please respect that time limit if one is enacted. And my other request is that if the same point has already been brought forward, and you just want to indicate who supports Bob or Susie, you can just indicate a statement. Please do, and let's just try to avoid redundancy, to respect everyone's time as they have come up here this evening. Mr. Chairman, those are my comments as we set the stage for moving forward towards public comment.
Alright, so one of the things we wanna get established is the amount of time we wanna give the public per person to discuss. Um, we kinda discuss some examples, but I'd like the board to make a motion as to a lot of the time that it is... Sorry, I'm on my phone. Sorry. Alright, folks, is that better? Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna bring up to the board, um, the discussion of how long individuals will have to speak this evening. Um, again, to respect everybody's time, uh, maybe somebody here on the board would like to make a motion as to their view of how long we wanna give, but I would like this to be a board decision. Mr. Chairman, in light of everybody being here tonight, thank you all for being here. It's a great, it's a great turnout. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you all for being here tonight. In light of everybody being here, and possibly everybody has something to say, I think we should, we should act in fairness and give everybody time to speak. And you've given us, uh, an example, one minute, two minutes, or three minutes. I'd like to make the motion that we, if the public speaks for three minutes. Can I have a motion on the table? Do we have a second?
No.
A motion, a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We'll give everyone in the public three minutes to speak this evening. Folks, how we're gonna conduct this is, uh, we've got two mics here. Uh, folks can come up. We can create a line. Uh, we'll probably go from mic to mic. And we'll give everybody three minutes. Uh, and for sake of time, the board is gonna allow everybody to talk. We're not gonna engage everybody directly. Uh, after everybody's had an opportunity to discuss this, uh, in the way that they feel is important to them, the board then will turn it back over to ourselves for discussion. At that point, you'll have votes if we wanna call on somebody in the audience to elaborate more on their comments. Uh, at that point, um, Amber, I think you have some letters for us?
Everyone here? Okay, I have a few letters that have been submitted to the planning commission office. I'm gonna read those. Um, if any of the individuals who have sent one in would like to speak for themselves, um, if I don't begin this one, and you'd like to speak on it yourself, please let me know, and I'll stop to go to the next one. I do have ten letters here to read. First one is from Glenn Newman. Um, dear planning commission and officials, I am a resident here of Monticano, two fifty south, where it's adjacent to the proposed site of the data center project. I am writing to express my strong opposition to this development. My family and I moved here from Illinois in June twenty twenty-five, drawn by the East Open Space and rural beauty of Star County. We invested in this property as a place of sanctuary for our family and to care for our horses in a clean, quiet natural environment. The proposed data center threatens to permanently alter the character of our community. I have several serious concerns regarding this project. Noise pollution, water pollution, and pollution risk, light pollution, air pollution, and environmental impact, loss of rural character and property values, demand for electricity. I urge the county commissioners and planning commissioners to carefully consider the long-term consequences of approving this data center. While economic development is important, it must be balanced with rights and well-being of residents and the preservation of Star County's rural identity. There are more suitable industries, areas for this kind of project, places with appropriate infrastructure, infrastructure, zoning, and distance from homes and apartments. Please carefully investigate the undesirable outcomes of these facilities being built so close to our residential areas such as the New Carlyle in Indiana. Lastly, please stand with the residents of East Two Fifty South and the surrounding community to protect our water, air, and quality of life. Our next public email sent in was from Susan Estantis. Um, dear planning commission, I am so against having a data center in Star County. Here are a few of the cons of a data center. Please Google cons of data centers. No benefits will outweigh the cons. Hopefully, I will work with the media for this. The data center's supposed to be or developed, and it is already not a done deal in this little area. Any information would be greatly appreciated. Um, some of these cons are high energy consumption, water usage, emissions, noise pollution, waste, the financial and operation challenges, high costs, scalability limitations, operational costs, excessive prodigies, accessibility and management, limited accessibility, and the complexity of managing the many complex systems such as application storage. It can be a difficult and require specialized stuff. Our next one is from Tara Jacobson. To planning commission members, I am writing to you regarding a very important issue, the proposed data center in Star County. Data centers are the wrong approach to Star County and raise serious concerns about the water and land use, as well as the imminent implications of these data centers. In addition, there are no protections for water infrastructure that have been communicated regarding this proposed data center. Data centers operate using exorbitant amounts of energy, land, and water. So much of what makes Star County great is the beauty of our unique natural resources, land, and water. A data center will be put at this at risk for our area. For these and many other reasons, I am urging the planning commission to oppose the proposed data centers in Star County. I could not attend the meeting this week, and I wanted to be sure my family's voice was heard. Thank you. Our next one is Matthew Metz. To do this, Nathan, I am writing to express my opinion on this suggested moratorium on data centers in Star County. I would like to see the moratorium passed, and then hopefully extended much beyond the twelve-month timeline. Data centers are known to use a vast amount of resources such as water, electricity, making things more expensive and possibly scarce for residents of the surrounding area. These buildings also tend to have large physical footprint, while only creating a small handful of jobs. The proposal for a data center in Warren Township near Indianapolis was projected to use four hundred and fifty-seven acres of land, but only create about fifty jobs. That proposal was rejected. I do not see how a data center will provide enough benefit to our county and residents throughout the natural footprint. Thank you. Next comment is from Diana Byers. Dear sir, thank you for opening and reading this email. I'm a citizen of Star County, born in Tip Top, Kentucky, raised in Knox, and have lived in North Justice for the past fifty years. While not able to make a moratorium meeting, I am hoping that you will read this and place it for my vote against said hyperscale data center and for a twelve-month moratorium. My reasoning for it is follows, and to begin with, no data center of any size, even those less than five thousand square feet, should be allowed. And yes, moratoriums should be put in place, however, not just for twelve months. The consequences of allowing the data center in Star County are too great for this community. Consider this will affect the people where they, the people in that school, including your family, can be tracked and controlled even in the privacy of their home, the shutting off or turning on of anything in or around their home, that is connected to the internet, TVs, garage doors, switches and lights, surveillance in our vehicles. The electric rates in our county will raise dramatically. What about the enormous amount of water needed by those data centers for four years? Where is that going to come from? The old friend, Yellow River, and Pinky are already extremely low. They will be gone forever, and what about the wild west? It certainly will be gone as well. Nothing is able to stand that constant buzzing noise emitted by the data center. No one wants to live by that. There goes the property values, and to say this, and it is not released by far, is this volatile time. Should war break out, we would be in danger of enemy attacks to destroy those data centers. The people of Star County need to be protected by those in charge, such as yourself. In conclusion, semi-cold old friend and neighbor who is no longer with us, gentlemen, you can ignore this many citizens of the one company. Thank you, and respectfully submitted planning commission public hearing to the twelve-month moratorium regarding the hyperscale data center in Star County, in Kansas, with kind regards. This one is from Jill Hardispeak to the Star County Planning Commission. Thank you for receiving comments on the one-year moratorium on data center projects within the unincorporated areas of Star County. I am glad the planning commission has the force to thoroughly understand the power and infrastructure requirements of data centers unlike other counties that seem to have the power and various issues. I am in favor of a one-year moratorium, and hope the planning commission will consider public comment if the planning data center requires without structure. Thank you. Next one is Paul T. T. As a resident of Knox, I vigorously oppose putting a data center near Knox. We don't have the water or power to run the data center. Nipso is not reliable and does not have the capacity, which means our rates are going to go up. What happens to our wells as the data center attracts and round water? What will happen to our property taxes as a result of the tax breaks you will give this data center? This data center will not provide that many jobs if they are fully automated. We don't want this data center running our homes. Sincerely, Paul. Next one is from Jane Johnson. Planning board members, thank you for your consideration for hearing the public opinions for the residents of Star County. I wanna start by affording you to recommend to the commissioners to accept a moratorium of more than twelve months of time to evaluate decisions and jump forward with plans to execute on hyper data center projects. I further suggest that smaller data center projects should be included. There are so many unanswered questions to be considered, and allowing a longer moratorium. It would give the commissioners, as well as the Star County residents, time to fully investigate long-term effects of this decision might pose upon the people. We would all have essential time to ask neighbors and nearby communities to influence data centers have made for their daily lives, also to see if it has benefited or diminished the way of lives in their pursuit of happiness. An extended moratorium should allow ample time to research any adverse impacts that can be expected, such as high energy consumption, air quality, noise pollution, substantial use of water, and increased carbon emission. The community is already reminded on a monthly basis each and every time we open our electric cell. The board needs to disclose to the community if an environmental assessment and an environmental statement have been or will be committed for the purpose of transparency by establishing guardrails at the onset of decision-making. We as a community will feel that we are being properly represented. Our representatives should be implementing policies now to protect our community with responsible decision-making. In closing, we have asked ourselves, temporary driving from big tech is worth the destruction of the quality of life for the community that I have been a part of my whole life. Thank you, Jane. Next is Julie Shepherd. I have grown up to live and work in Star County my entire life. Many others too can choose to remain here because we are connected to our quiet, small-town living. On behalf of myself, my family, and all the East Star County residents, we do not consent to having any data centers on Star County land. Sincerely, Julie Shepherd and Jane. Our last one, um, John Minkowski. Good morning. I would like to address my concerns and issues with data centers and support for a moratorium. My family has lived on the same farm since the late nineteen thirty. I am the fourth-generation owner, father, and have a young family. I was born here, raised here, have started a family in this great community. I love not only my land, but our community's land and environment. It's what makes Star County beautiful, and concerned with environmental impact, quality of water, and potential light noise, and water pollution because of the data center. Water consumed and serving in the server cooling is enormous. Hyperscale data centers consume up to five million gallons of water per day, equivalent to water consumed for a town occupied by cars. for a town occupied by 10,000 to 50,000 people. Stark County's population per 2024 census was 23,371. At the New Carlisle data center project, local residents reported water pressure dropping substantially for shallow wells completely drying up. While the DNR investigated this and said that it was the historical drought that caused it, many residents are still skeptical and the DNR is still investigating. Firstly, I would not want to experience that either. Many local farmers use irrigations in the fields to maintain good crop yield through the dry season. What happens if that water stops flowing? The water is used for cooling where it is sourced from? It is sourced from the local water table and goes into the cooling pipes. Where does it discharge? If the water is contaminated in any way, we can damage the cooling pipe. If it discharges back into the water table and there is even a minute chance of contamination, this is dangerous. We do not want another 1977 Love Mountain. Noise runoff by new data centers will affect residents living in proximity in the local wildlife. The constant homo servers network switches, routers, air conditioners, system, industrial cooling fans, backup diesel generators create a significant persistent noise level exceeding 80. And when the backup generators are running, exceeding 100% wildlife migration patterns will change. For the non-existent, people living in proximity may experience sleep disturbances, headache, and increased stress levels, just to name a few. This is caused by the constant low frequency hum. Light pollution from the data centers risks as well. They need 24/7 lighting for security purposes and operational lighting. If this is poorly designed and clogged sky glow, in fact, where the light is reflected upwards, generally caused by a high-willment LED and illuminated in the night sky of the data center, which may be visible from eyes. This can alter the local wildlife predator prey dynamics and the safety of the data center. Electrically used to an operational head field that is a data center is estimated at 100 megawatts or more per day for about 8.7 petawatt power density. Hyperscale data centers use roughly the same electricity as small U.S. stations. The infrastructure would need to be updated. We will take that. The residents of the county are already seeing rise in electricity goes unsustainable levels. What happens if the data center comes in? Electricity goes will go even higher because of the increased demand and the cost of it. Upgrading the power grid needs a demand. Even worse, there is potential enrollment around us due to the demand of hyperscale data centers in such a small community. Land usage for a hyperscale data center is large. Take a look at the data center made built in New Carlisle. What happens when the data center becomes obsolete? With rapid advances in technology and in the failure, the community is up for the large heights or the remainder as the cost of two demolish can be very costly and the land will not be returned to its previous state of use. Next, I'd like to address the claim of job creation and a pronounced growth. But the data center developers like to claim yes, the data center will have permanent employees in operation, but what is the amount? Perhaps a dozen or two in fact? Many of the employees may also work remote from other states and they are highly skilled jobs requiring years of education and/or experience. Temporary jobs during construction days will not be locally traded. Developers have their own general contractors, subcontractors. Take a look at what happened in Michigan City in October this year. In late October 2025, Phoenix planned that its Royal Road or Project Days would be located and called Michigan City Police three times on local 150 allegedly picketing on private property. On first visit, police supported local 150 that picketers were appropriately positioned on public property. On the second visit, two days later, the police changed the position and advised the local 150 was in fact on private property. On the third visit, police arrested two local 150 picketers and impounded Gabby in the rap day and were charged with criminal harassment. Two days later, the local county prosecutor dismissed the charges in court citing insufficient information regarding ownership of the Royal Road. Followed this from Alabama-based contractor that sued local 150 allegedly in union protest to delay the project and coerced the company into hiring exclusively local laborers. Finally, what is the impact on the property values surrounding the potential data center? With developers offering exorbitant amounts of money for land, will this drive up property taxes? How will this affect homes, values and property values in the surrounding areas? There are just too many unanswered questions and local examples of the damage that data centers do. Also, I do not see how data centers development will provide economic growth for our community shy of large amounts of money being invested by urgently landing an inflated rate and exorbitant construction costs all the potentials of the tax abatement to be felt. The citizens of Stark County subsidizing the destruction of our environments, draining our infrastructure, and the potential long-term health effects that could come because of pollution from a data center does not balance out the economic development and investment of our community. In conclusion, the environmental risks, pollution risks, infrastructure power grid risks are a risk on citizens of Stark County that should be a moratorium on the development of data centers and projects. While not against economic development for our community, the risks of placing a data center developing so close to residential homes and neighborhoods is not right. Thank you for reading my comments regarding the proposed moratorium. I am firmly opposed to the possibility of a data center in our great community and I fully support a moratorium on the development of data centers.
All right, thank you, member. All right, one more thing before we get started here. My good friend John down here has spent a lot of time building some very fancy signs and he all. And he's going to hold them up. We have a 15-second warning sign and we have a stop sign there. Obviously, to be respectful, if you have a few seconds left and we're at three minutes, I'll let you finish. If you continue on, we are going to ask you to stop. If that continues, people will cut the mic. But that's not our intention here. The goal is to give everybody a fair opportunity to talk. I have a request from a board member here. Please keep someone's on you. Do not distract anybody from trying to speak. Again, I'm going to go over the mics. We have two mics up here. We'll create two lines. I will alternate between the two. You'll have three minutes to speak. Again, the board is not likely going to address every individual. We will address things that come up at the end during our discussion. Please be respectful to everybody, even if their opinion does not align with yours. We don't need any confrontation here tonight. That's not anybody's fault. Okay, looking for a motion from the board to open public comments. I have motion to open public comment for Mark. A second from Dale Aldo in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion passes to open for public comment or hold them to come up. I will also ask you to state your name before you start speaking. Go ahead.
My name is Mark Milo. I was at the last meeting. I'd like to correct something that I said at the last meeting. I said I served on this board many years ago. Well, old age is actually something. I was actually at the zoning board of the county when I served. Another thing I might point out correctly was said this evening as we set the pledge of allegiance. Nowhere in there did it say that we are a democratic republic. We are a representative republic. I think that that's worthy of being said because all of these people here and many hundreds that I've talked to since that last meeting that are opposed to this find that fact important because we, the people, are to be represented by you, the appointed members, and by those that are elected into office. With that being said, I think we can end this meeting pretty quick. By what you're doing, I believe, is a valid attempt to figure out a way to deal with these data centers. But you're opening the door for the moratorium. You're not going to be able to write a ordinance that tells them how much water they can pull out of the ground, how much noise they can make, how much lights they can have running, how many decibels of fan noise they can make. Technology is evolving in that industry. And a building being built in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and they are going to use a closed-loop system where they do not pump directly from the ground constantly like being proposed and being used with many of them. My recommendation is to say no to a moratorium, no to data centers, any way, shape, or form or size. And that this group should be afforded the opportunity to stand in front of the county commissioners who will be elected to say, no, we don't want this. It is not going to benefit us in any way. 20- to 50-year average of tax abatement? How does that benefit our community? 20 or 30 jobs, 50 jobs? I think we would be better served to be the escape for other communities that put in data centers. Our town of Knox just invested in a subdivision that needs homes built in it. There's other land that's suitable for homes to be built. People of means will want to escape where these data centers are. We could be the refuge for that. We would benefit from the number of people that we have growing in our community. Thank you so much.
I'm a woman of Baxter. I don't think I could say anything better than what he did. That was just great. Needless to say, I'm here because I'm opposed to it. I don't want to lose my water. I don't want to hear noise 24 hours a day. I don't want to have emissions to smell. I'm curious, how many of you up here have wells? Come right here. Any of you got a well? Well, then you know what it might be like to lose your water. It's not fun. I don't want my house property to go down if I don't have water and I keep losing water because of a data center. I think before anything's done, we need to do more studying. Let's see what happens to these towns like New Carlisle and Hobart who's wanting to put it in. See what happens to them before we make any decisions. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Schrader. At this point, we've all heard the discussions regarding property zoning assessments, tax abatements, and all the other legal stuff that goes along with something like this. And I'm not going to say they aren't important for argument's sake, but the question I keep coming back to is why? Why is this happening here? Why is the government even entertaining this idea? My dad was born in San Pierre in 1918 and was proud to come from a farming area. That's what we are, a rural farming community. And while I've only been here 23 years, I've come to love this quiet life. City folks call us rednecks and hillbillies. But those same people depend on us for food. They attend our farmers' markets and fairs. They buy homes here to escape the noise and pollution in the city and suburbs. So why would you consider allowing this? Who is it benefiting? The farmers that need the river and the water irrigation? The wildlife that live and feed off vegetation and nest in the trees? The homeowners that are going to pay more in taxes for property that's going to be worth less once these despicable solar farms and now a possible data center? Because we all know that once one goes in, more will follow, just like solar. It's a cancer that's going to destroy the beauty of the country living, which we enjoy. It's the only thing we really have. You can call it progress. I call it a renovation. It'll ruin our rivers, our lakes, our farms, our clean air, our scar-filled nights around a bonfire, our hunting and fishing. All of that would be replaced by noise and concrete. And given the fact that it's going to house computers, I don't see any long-term jobs beyond it being built. So instead of dumping land and money into this atrocity, how about addressing the homeless, the vets, the drug issues, the state of our roads that the solar farms destroyed? I guess the one point I want to stress in this whole deal is that people don't want this here. The people who pay taxes here, the people who live here and vote here. This is our county who were voted into office to run for us with our best interest in mind and not sell it out to Big Tech. This is not what the vast majority of Stark County wants. You're potentially allowing a select few to decide what they feel is best for us and we're standing here saying, we don't want it. You hear us at the polling places every few years. You need to hear us now. I don't want a moratorium. I want a lifetime ban. Then focus on what the county needs. The residents can build a facility that's found in Stark County. This is to prove that you're hearing us and that you're on our side. Thank you for your time.
My name is Robert Early. Tonight, you've already heard and you'll hear more a lot of concerns about water usage, electricity demand, noise, traffic, and all the other impacts related to large-scale data centers. Those are important issues, but what I want to focus on is something different. Our county's actual capacity to manage and enforce a project in this setting. When we talk about data centers over 5,000 square feet, we're not just talking about a bigger building. We're talking about a level of complexity that is far beyond anything Stark County has had to oversee. And the truth is, even with the strongest ordinance in the world, we cannot safely manage a project. We don't have the staff or infrastructure to monitor. Right now, our entire planning department and enforcement capacity is three people. One planning administrator, one building inspector, and one part-time enforcement officer. That staff is already stretched thin. With the workloads that they have today, asking them to regulate a data center possibly hundreds of thousands of square feet with round-the-clock energy demand, cooling systems, environmental controls, emergency planning requirements is simply not realistic. And we already have real examples showing us the consequences of taking on. Awesome. Oh, there we go. Is that taking on? I lost my phone, sorry. Taking on. Oh, I think this was working.
There you go. You're good.
Okay, there we go. All right, we already have real examples showing the consequences of taking on those large, complex developments without the ability to follow through. Take the solar fields in San Pierre. Those projects had clearly required conditions like planting, screening trees that were never planted. To my knowledge, no one from the county followed up to ensure compliance. I don't believe that's because people didn't care. It's because our staffing levels make that kind of follow-through almost impossible. Or consider that we still do not have as-built planes from NextEra, a basic requirement for a project of that scale. Not only that, but the engineering firm hired by our own county to review NextEra's most recent permit overlooked the entire battery storage facility, included in that permit. Our own paid experts, if our own paid experts can miss something that major in a solar project, how do we expect to effectively review and monitor a data center with far more magnitude and more complexity? And I also don't want to hear, because I've heard it already, "Don't worry, the developer will bring their own engineers and inspectors, so our county won't have to." That's not how regulation works. Those engineers report to the company. Their job is to protect the company's interests, not the county. They cannot take the place of local oversight, local inspections, and local enforcement. This isn't theoretical. Other counties in Indiana and across the country are hitting pause because they recognize these capacity issues. I'm close. And that's why this 12-month moratorium is so important. This isn't just about researching and creating ordinances. It's about honestly assessing whether a county with our staffing levels, even with a perfect ordinance, can ever safely monitor and enforce a project of this scale. We cannot approve projects we don't have the capacity to oversee.
Do we need to change anything for Mike? Okay. Hey, are we good to start over here?
Hi, my name is Linda. I'm starting from the next week. Would the commission close off the municipal... And we need to gather public input on planning matters. Tonight, the community is speaking clearly. We do not support this data center. Stark County has operated successfully since 1835, nearly two centuries without a data center and without large-scale solar. And while our population changes, it's difficult to overlook that we are not growing stronger after recent industrial-scale solar approvals. There are better ways to grow our county. We could be investing in tourism, reviving life in our downtown, and supporting family-friendly development. We could be encouraging small, locally-driven business growth instead of projects that do not respect community priorities. Stark County is a welcoming seasonal getaway. We already see a steady stream of weekend visitors who come here for Bass Lake, local outdoor recreation, and our small town character. These are the kinds of development that will be community, not survival. Approving this data center risks long-term consequences for Stark County's identity, economy, and environmental character. It risks driving away the people who sustain this community regeneration. And it jeopardizes the archaic values and desirability of areas like Bass Lake where prosperity depends on preservation and not industrial infiltration. If this project moves forward, moratorium or not, the commission must be prepared to answer for the impact on our land, our economy, and our future. Your decision will determine whether Stark County remains a place people want to live, invest in, and proudly call home. Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Murphy here. A couple things I'd like to go over. Bass Lake can pump water into that lake since 1960. Five-year average, 228 million gallons per year. With that, you cannot pump water out of the lake, only a higher degree. Here's a way to protect groundwater, which we could use. And then... The... Wall Street Herald, even concerned about data centers, going back to the data bubble and AI. These companies use each other's funds. And then when the market went out, we walked away. Looking forward, that should be very important to you. Another example of government lending, listening to people. I also own property in Mark County. Many years ago, it went to a wind term of community housing. The people banded together, stated their case, and the government listened to the people. I feel we need more of that in our county. And with the other thing, there was an article published in the Indiana Cultural Day yesterday morning. It brought up three things about data centers. First, in 2019, the data center did not have to pay tax or pay... Secondly, data centers run full self-24/7. That's going to affect the power grid. And they want people to regulate our type of wind used power to accommodate the data center. That's wrong. The other thing that was thrown up is... And solar development developed with Russian hand care with the communities they helped promote. Local governments can acquire enforceable commitments before they're allowed to build. I think some of what some of our methods don't control is a prime example of that. And with that being said, I am not in favor of a data center at any time in the county. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brooke McKenney. I'm 23 years old and live here in Knox with my family. This data center that is being proposed will use millions of gallons of water every single day. And my question is, where is that water coming from? Because I know personally at my house, we have so little water already that we cannot do things like shower and run the dishwasher at the same time. And this proposal would take that little water that we have, and where are we supposed to go from there? Not only that, but these data centers have been proven... There has been evidence of rare cancers and birth defects happening in the areas where these data centers are being built. I don't know about you, but I would rather not have rare cancer. I would rather not have a child born with a birth defect so that people can use AI to help them with their daily tasks. Or as a therapist... And I think that the implications of what this will do, we don't really even know that. This is all very new, and everything that we do know is bad. What else are we going to find out when it's too late to do anything about it? Yes, I am in favor of this moratorium, but more than that, I'm in favor of an absolute ban on these data centers. I think that we should laugh in the face of these out-of-touch billionaires who are suggesting this. The way that you vote will tell us everything about how much you really care about the citizens of Stark County. Because if you think that we are going to take this lightly, you've lost your damn life. And I'm going to stand here and reiterate all the things that have already been said. You guys know very well the consequences of all this. But before I go, I would like to leave you with a Native American proverb that I think fits the situation very well. When all the trees have been cut down, when all the animals have been hunted, when all the waters are polluted, when all the air is unsafe to breathe, only then will you discover you cannot eat money. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Sickleton. I am a union millwright. I'm the one that works on NIPSCO's generating plants down there. We feel Michigan City. I also work at New Carlyle at St. Joe Energy. I helped build that place. Outside of the gates up there is their big, I guess, their AI system. It's a joke. The water up there is bad. There's a guy up there, they showed pictures of his pond with the water gone down three foot. They can't drink the water. It's bad. I got something here from the State's Attorney General, from Todd. Says here, every click, every purchase, every search, every doctor visit, every dollar you spend is tracked, package is sold. So all these lines that they put in the ground out here are warning to us that this is coming in. We should have recognized when they were putting the white pies in the ground, what was going to happen. And actually, this meeting right now should not be happening because you people should go back and tell them, "No, it's not going to happen." We don't need it. There's good farm ground out there. It's going to waste. The ground up there, they put the package on with good farm ground. On the other side of the highway, they took up 600 acres and put a battery factory in, which GM shut down right now because it's not working out for them. So please go back and tell them, "No, we don't want it." Thank you.
Justin Reis here. First, I would like to say thank you guys for being proactive. You know, we about had a company try to sneak in on us, you know, without the public's knowledge. And you guys, I saw, were ahead of that game. We're going to stop today right away. I feel like you guys are doing the right thing here. I have faith that you're going to make the right votes. So I just want to take this time to thank you. I know I don't speak for everybody, but you guys know that I speak for a whole lot more people that were here tonight. And we do ask that you pass the word. Thank you.
I'm Todd Linebaugh. I'm in Stark County Council President. I don't come here as a council member. I come here as a citizen. I've lived here my entire life. I love this county. I've always loved it. And I do appreciate what you guys are doing right now because transparency has been a thing that has been kind of behind the door because there wasn't any. And Ryan here is a perfect example of what should be done. And as far as tax abatements, I'm not going to say much more about it than look into it. Look how many jobs are created per $100 million of tax abatements. You'll be shocked to find out that it's probably two or three. So with that being said, there has been some really good points tonight. And I think what you have at hand now is a one-year moratorium. That's what we're voting on now. Who's to say that maybe one year is not enough? But this is what you're voting on now, and this is what you have to vote on. I don't think this is not really a... It's not an anti-data center as much as it is a pro-Stark County and the people. So you guys have time to do the right thing, make the right choice, put everything in play. The infrastructure, we... If anybody would come to a council meeting and see how we struggle to allocate money, and that's not going to get any easier. This is going to actually probably make it considerably worse than what it is. So I appreciate what you're doing, and thank you.
My name is Eric Gray. First, I want to apologize for four things again. I said a lot, too. First off, I'm an in-plant. I'm from the city. A lady earlier said, "All the rednecks that live here." You know, I grew up in lights everywhere, buildings everywhere. I moved out here for quiet peace, darkness, and I'll never go back. Bought a house if I did to learn that, to keep going. Sometimes it's hard to buy a gallon of milk here. A five-star family box of macaroni cheese is $12.99. That alone, it makes it hard for a lot more people in this town, this county. My biggest question I have to do, we're here talking, we guys talk about moratorium. We're here to vote on that. Should we have a one-year moratorium? The logistical wording limit is not what you say, it's how you say it. So my biggest question is, is it already done and said? We're just waiting for a year to... For the witnesses, like you guys are saying, like, hey, how much water you can use, how much light you can use, how many people you've got to hire? Is that what we're here to vote on, or are we here to yes or no? Because to me, I'm not getting that. You guys said you'd be taking notes. I've seen three checkbooks on your table. Yes, no, yes, no. We all know it's a no. We don't want it. But nobody's checked yet. I mean, it's yes or no on the tip. Nobody's written down any notes. Nobody's written down anything. And you guys are going through it. I'm not trying to take away from you. Half of us wouldn't do it because we would be up there if we wanted to. But I'm just saying, if we're only voting to delay this, I mean, I guess is that what we're doing? Instead of trying not to go all over again? If you say yes and it comes in and we're just here wasting our time if you haven't decided already, it's going to come, we're just going to put some laws and, you know, red tape? I can't afford to buy a new well in 10 years. I can't afford to buy a well now. What am I going to do when it comes in and it takes all our water? Again, I'm an in-plant, so I can almost kind of say, all the people that come to Bass Lake every weekend, that's our economy. That's what we want. And if one comes in, that goes away too. All the Airbnb's that are here because people from Chicago want the darkness and the fun lake? That goes away. So I mean, again, we're just fighting a losing battle regardless. Is that, I mean, is that what we're doing here? And if it is, you know, let us know so we know that. If it's already done and said, like the other young gentleman said, we're wasting our time here. I mean, I relate that. I'm all over the place. And I just have some questions. Really, the biggest one is, the wording you guys are saying, to me, makes it sound you guys have already made up your minds. It's coming. It's here, regardless what we say or what we want. You guys want to know how much they're taking, what options we need to do. Three more seconds. Again, it's tough enough as it is to live here with Forbes County, you know, in the northern part. So when we add this, there is no more jobs coming with this. So again, I don't see no notes again, but if we're just wasting our time saying yes or no? No, I don't want it either.
Sir, I'm going to ask you, Mr. Taichar, I have a board member that would like to address you.
What's your name, sir?
Patrick.
Thank you for being here, Patrick. And I've been listening very intensely to what you've been saying. And thank you for everything you said. I have been taking notes, sir. And I'm listening to everything everybody here is saying.
I'm listening. I'm listening.
Right, I'm listening, and I'm taking notes. I think we are. And this, and I am going to speak for the board. And if I'm getting out of line, please, please, please let me know, board. But we are listening. And sir, this is not a cut and dry, that we're going through the formalities to accept a data center. I can assure you, that is not what our purpose is tonight. We are here to hear what you got to say. Thank you for what you have to say. And we are going through the process to hear what the community has to say and for the purpose of a moratorium. But for it to be cut and dry, that a data center is coming into this county? No, that's not right. We, most of us on this board have our opinions. I have my opinion. I'd be happy to share my opinion with you after the meeting. But we are here, it is not a cut and dry meeting tonight. We are here to take your opinions very, very seriously.
I want to know why we can't hear your opinion. I'm sorry, I just generally want to know, as a board member, why we aren't able to hear what the data center is saying? You can have your share, but why can't you share?
And why?
Let's hear it.
Is that okay? I mean, I don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
This is my first time I've ever been to one. I lived alone with the solar panels. I have my own.
Yes, ma'am.
But it was in a different location. I want to know, why can't you not share with us? You'll say you have to share it one way or you share it another.
There's no objection to it. I think the purpose of the meeting this evening was a moratorium and subsequent to that, to discuss what the potential ordinance may look like. That ordinance may look like completely restricted one. That ordinance may look like restricted size or location. It may be an outright ban. This is to give us opportunity and time, which currently we don't have.
In fairness to this lady's question, now, my name is Howard Bailey, and I am against data centers.
All right, folks, we're going to get back. We've just finished a public comment here, so everybody has an opportunity to talk. We'll have more discussion.
I think the public would like to give a tie here for seven of them, right? We got a bit of a affair.
I'm going to let this gentleman here continue with the plan for the evening. I'm sorry, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Kerry Chameau. I'm the president of the Gaslight Property Association. Along with me is Tom Bush. He's the vice president. We're here to represent the members out at the lake. And, you know, we definitely feel that the moratorium definitely needs to be put in place, even if it is only going to be for a year. Hopefully, you know, good studies will be done on all the effects of the hyperscale data center. The only concern that I've heard a couple of other people talking about Bass Lake, which I'm glad that they're supporting it. Also, we have Pooms Lake here in the county too. But our concern is that maybe if they do come up, or if you do come up with an ordinance, is that in that ordinance is put in there that they have to use a closed-loop chemical cooling system for the water. They won't be necessarily then cooling freshwater out all the time. And also, as has been said before too, about the NIPSCO prices, RMC, electric prices and stuff. If they were forced to have their own generating system for their electricity so that in the future, the taxpayers here in the county won't be forced with higher electrical rates.
I think with the comprehensive plan, the early in place, we're asking that you also follow for California township and Northern township. An industrial, not a urban in those townships. The comprehensive plan is pretty thorough. And it might be a good idea to take a look at redoing that comprehensive plan as well.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Parker. I'm here today to speak about the dangers of a data center and to be built in Stark County. I won't rehash the environmental and energy impacts that this data will cause, data center will cause. But I do want to cover the health impacts. Healthcare is more costly than ever. None of us can afford to get really sick right now. Um, none of us can afford to get really sick right now, but in Memphis, Tennessee, Elon Musk's AI company has built a data center whose energy demands have outgrown the region's energy capabilities. You've heard from everyone else saying that our infrastructure does not have the capacity of, uh, to support a data center. And as a result, gas turbines are emitting nitrogen oxides to the point where residents cannot breathe. Their community is being used as a sacrifice for others to get rich. We cannot allow that to happen to us. And to look at it in a larger context, proponents of a data center may say that the AI raise necessitates the rapid construction of these data centers without focusing on the one, long-term effects. To that, I would encourage them to reflect on previous technological races throughout history. The race to build nuclear weapons almost destroyed us. How do we know that these data centers and AI will not destroy us? Until there are health, energy, and environmental regulations regarding AI and data centers in place, we cannot support this event, this venture. There's no guarantee that the AI boom will lead to any long-lasting job field. If the main players in the AI vote to go up in smoke, we will be the ones cleaning up the mess and feeling these effects for decades. As representatives of this county citizens, I hope you listen to the concerns of all of your constituents here, and that your vote represents them accordingly. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
My name is Shannon Howard, and I'm very nervous right now. Um, I wanna start off by saying that the good Lord gave us this land to take care of, and once it's ruined and polluted, there is no getting of that. We owe it to our children and our grandchildren to protect it. Let's be the county that listens to the people and stop it right now. No moratorium and no data centers ever. Still, the number of people that are already down by over 200 from last year. We put a data center in here, it's gonna get worse. Our young people are gonna leave, and no one else is gonna come in. We've gotta protect, and we need to just stop, stop it now.
Good evening, my name's John Collage. I too am an in-plant in Stark County. I came twenty-three years ago, and I came here for a piece of quiet and solitude, and it's disapparent. When I, the way I found out about solar panels coming in here, I happened to be driving around, and I saw fences go, so I asked the questions. What, what's coming in here? And it's solar panels. I don't think most of the people knew this was happening. Now, how did that affect us? They produce, what, 400 megawatts? My bill has tripled since I moved here, tripled. I used to pay 2.30 a month, now I pay 7.50. So how did it help me? What is this data center doing for any of us? It's gonna monitor us. It's, it's, it's only gonna harm us. We don't need it in Stark County, we don't need it anywhere in this country. But what are we gonna do with it? So I'm against it, and I hope everybody hears against it.
Well, my name is Thunder Mahal. I went to school with a lot of kids that you guys have. All right, I think it's important that you guys hear from the younger generation on this too, that we say no to data centers. Why do we say no to data centers? Because the inflation and poop cost is through the roof. If you guys wanna do something to make a change in this world, help, build houses for the homeless, make houses for the, for the military vets that come back overseas that lost everything while they were gone fighting a war that we shouldn't have been in in the first place. Do something other than allow a data center to come in here, drain wells, so it makes it even harder for a community that's not rich, because 90% of this community is not rich. They're fighting to pay bills, they're fighting to feed their families, they're fighting for the wells when the water is scarce. I mean, the farmers need it. America was founded on farmland and farming. Stark County and Blaskai County, and the counties around us, if you drive through, it's mostly farmland. And with that being said, not only that, but there are more hunters in this county and in surrounding counties that go off the wildlife, like deer hunting, to help put food in their freezers, because the cost of food is so high. There's so many bad things already happening to this community due to inflation of higher people above you's decision. The last thing we need is for somebody to make another decision to make life harder on the lower-income families in this county. Honestly, all of you have kids, or grandkids, or your son, or your daughter, or grandpa, or grandma, or whatever you are, think about them before you allow this data center to come into this county. Because every child that goes to this school, Stark County, and every one of its school districts, has to fight to get acceptance from downstate to be able to feed these kids for free, because the cost of the lunch bills and the breakfast bills are already through the roof. And there's, yeah, you could say that people shouldn't have so many kids, well, at the end of the day, as board members of this county, you do not have to make it harder by putting a data center in here that's gonna raise the cost of food. So some of these kids come to school, they get a meal, but sometimes at home, they don't get to eat because the electricity bill, the water bill is too high. This is why we say no to data centers. And at the end of the day, we need to, you guys needed to hear this from the younger generation and not just the older generation.
Hi, my name is Haley Crouch. I, uh, have lived here most of my life. I, my family has lived here for generations and generations, and I moved to Indianapolis for about a decade to see what the city's like. And once I was ready to have a family, I wanted to come back here, because I know this is a safe community with a lot of benefits. It has better cost of living, it has a place where you can see stars and go float on the river and not have to worry about finding bodies in the river. And so I was so excited to come back here, for I have a strong community, and I just am so concerned that, like many others, that community would be tarnished by corporations coming in, taking advantage of a low-income community to get whatever they can from our land, and then leaving us to clean up whatever mess they might have. When, I, I live near where the previously suggested data center was going to be, and my first concerns were that now this water drain is gonna be in my backyard, I'm not gonna have water, I won't be able to sell my house, and I won't have the money to move somewhere else, because nobody's gonna wanna buy my house, because there's a data center blocking the stars out with the light, taking the water, polluting it. We hear again and again from these large corporations, no, it's completely safe, there's nothing to worry about, the water's fine, it's a closed inlet, uh, it's not gonna drain our energy and raise your bills. But we hear from those communities where they've gotten in, but that's not the case. And so we need you folks to step in, like it seems you're doing, to research what is actually going to be the effects on our communities, rather than just taking the corporations for a tour. So if they should start listening to us and giving us the chance to be.
Good evening. Uh, my name's John O'Kee, Stark County resident, California township. Um, this is just a little experience-type encounter. In 2005, I was a supervising electrician on the installation of a data center, one of the original ones, in, uh, next to our neighbor state of Illinois. This was built in the old Ellis Chang's manufacturing facility, okay? They built drafters, they built farm equipment. It had a 69,000-volt primary service coming in from Commonwealth Edison, and that was not common, like 12,000 volts. You guys don't wanna go to this, but long into the story, the area of the, of the factory that was dedicated as this data center, not much more spark-fish likes of what you guys are talking about, and it literally consumed every bit of that primary service that Edison was able to provide us. We had installed peakers, which, um, you guys close our backup, jet-engine turbine generators to facilitate any, you know, outages or anything of that nature. So when that baby's kicked out, it's like standing right next to, you know, 737, right? Out there, not as you'd be. And, uh, so to say that this thing is not gonna affect your electric bills in any way, shape, or form, you gotta be off of your rocker, because they, they just, they gobble kilowatts of electric like you wouldn't believe. You walk in these buildings, the ambient temperature in there, you, you wanna take off of your clothes, it's really, gotta be cycling 24 hours, keeping these, these, these places cool, you know? And when this thing did get finally completed, talk about how many people you're gonna employ, that facility had three women that operated the facility, unless they encountered some kind of stronger problem, then they were bringing outside people in, but they were there today, they're gone tomorrow, lots of issues. So it's not gonna do spike any employment long-term for your local residents, I can guarantee you that. They're like a ghost town waiting all day.
Good evening, uh, my name's Spencer England, I'm a resident here in Knox. Uh, I just wanna say I am 100% adamant to be opposed to the data center that's been discussed, right? I, I can tell you this, because of someone great in this room, I was the first person that I know of to put in employer requests, and that's how a lot of this is, it's not because of me, it's because of this great person in this room who didn't step forward, didn't want to, there was a reason behind it, and so we put that in, and then they find out there is conversation going on about something happening, okay? Where the conversation was, there was nothing happening, I don't know what you're talking about, and that's how it always works, and that's one of the reasons why I'm opposed to it. I'm gonna go through a few reasons, but mostly because every time government creates something or some new thing comes in that they find that they can make a lot of money in, and don't get me wrong, I'm not against anybody having a lot of money, because people who have a lot of money create jobs. But here's the situation, they always do things, and then who eats it in the end? It's always the taxpayer, because anything that's missed, and I mean, Mike and I talked about this in, in time, you know, six, eight, 10 months ago, about other things where the government always has to fill a void, but they fill it with your money, that's the problem. You've gotta be skedaddling once they make their dollars. So let me, let me explain something to you about AI, I'll tell you that I do know about the research, the meetings that I've had, with some of Ron's guys, and that's this. I did almost 20 years in military, okay? And there's different types of warfare. Different types of warfare is a type of warfare that they, it's called non-kinetic, uh, military action. It's like social engineering, AI, autonomous systems, okay? So we're in a race with China, so there is somewhat of a need for this type of a thing. The reason I'm against this isn't just because things are being hit, it's also because there hasn't been time to adjust to what things, they need to be addressed. So there is a war going on, and you've seen it with people getting their identification stolen, 5G, all this stuff, so there is a, there's a need for this, but there's also other places to put it, rather than in a great town like this, who I've come to love, it's a great little town, and you have to decide what you want. If you don't want it, you don't want it. I don't want it. I think the majority of this town doesn't want it. One thing I wanna mention is, is in Virginia, it's the largest data center market. They forego a billion dollars a year in state and local tax revenue without telling the public what companies are getting those subsidies and how much they receive. And if you know anything about what's been going on with the Indiana Department, or, uh, uh, IDC, um, they're under investigation, they have been, because there's companies who are taking federal and state tax dollars, and they're investing it, and they're personally making money off it. That's tied into this, believe that or not, okay? And then I'm gonna give you a couple other things, and then I'm done. In, in July of 2025, this, University of Michigan's Science, Technology, and Public Policy Department did a study on data centers. There's five, six points. Number one, increased utility rates. Number two, high resource, uh, consumption, so a lot of you are correct. Ineffective tax incentive, uh, resource, uh, efficiency trade-off, meaning like cooling methods and things that need to be improved on and not been done by a lot of these who have initially started. And, um, again, the one good thing I can say about Indiana is they at least do have to tell you who's getting subsidies and where it's being spent. At this point, you guys need to cut this down, shut it off for at least five years till we figure out what's going on.
Good evening, I'd like to thank all you guys, uh, for what you know. Eric Cager, lifelong resident of Stark County, good thing, bad thing. Uh, we have to look at the situation. The fact that what Spencer England said, these data centers are paid for by our tax dollar, so is all this garbage green energy that we have out in front of this town. Similar to what has happened, happened to Stark County with the solar, nothing's happened, nothing's happened, Bill Carroll is out of guard, hoping to get rid of it too late, for five years to get a moratorium. Unless the ground laws are set by this county, it needs to be detonated and done. We do not need what we want working the effort in moratorium. Our water, we don't supply enough in the area. Our electricity, we don't have enough in the area. And any upgrades that Nisko or RMC has to come through, comes out of our utility desk. We don't need any. And I would like to release the rest of my time to hear how the board feels about the data centers.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Kenny Johnson. I'll introduce myself, and, uh, I'm gonna tell you just the way it is. First of all, I got in the morning, sat at the table, got the newspaper out, and I said, "This data center watered in Stark County." I come, I went, "What the data center?" "What? What do you mean?" So I did research on it. I got it on my computer, I read everything I could about data centers from all over the United States, and I read about data centers through AI. AI takes all the information and puts it together, what's going on. A data center can cost up to a few million dollars to build, you know that? Water, 10,000 gallons a day. 10,000 gallons a day, they're gonna suck out of the ground. There goes our vacuum cleaner, out of the ground. Well, that's long. But you can't go to a closed cooling system, which represses the water. They can't try doing that. I, I haven't heard anything about that yet. Okay, well, it costs, it'll take up to 10 acres of land, at least 10 acres, you know that? 10 acre land. But it depends on how many services, you know, if it's a lot of services, it's gonna want to get in the system. But they didn't mention cloud services. There is a cloud up there, they can use cloud services to run the data center. We don't even have to build it. If you can look into that cloud service. Curious about that. What about backup generators? When power goes out, they have to have backup generators, because if power goes out, big diesel generators, they cost thousands of dollars, they have to be sitting out there waiting to go. Nobody mentioned that. Now, once the building's in and everything's running, fine, we gotta pay for staffing, we gotta pay for maintenance, we gotta pay for, uh, work engineers, we gotta pay for security, we gotta pay for system administrators all year long. What's that, $100,000 a piece a year? I don't know what they, 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 they want, I'm gonna tell you. That comes, that comes from the taxpayer. What? Jesus. And, yes, our, what are the lawyers gonna call? We gotta get lawyers involved in this. You know, they gotta be paid to write the contract and license and everything else. We got lawyers involved. Hey, that's gonna cost more than the whole damn building. Okay, what else I got to say? Will it raise the taxes? I didn't see that. Will it raise the taxes? Last thing? I know you don't like me talking. And then last thing, what they said, data centers can fail. They can fail. Thank you.
Hi, uh, Chris Lawrence, I live, uh, just outside Hamlet, in the Hamlet area. I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but, uh, I jived down a couple of weeks, I thought maybe I would ask a few questions about the moratorium. Um, you say then a facility over 5,000 square feet, would that limit somebody to do a single facility smaller than 5,000 square feet? Would that limit somebody to do a single facility smaller than five thousand square feet? Say nine to four thousand square feet?
And what?
That kind of, that happens with the air filter, it looks twenty miles. You know, there's no actually putting a building, so if you build one big building, you build two small buildings. But that's concerning. For the man also, the problem period might be not doing well with it. That research is going to take a while. One other thing I jotted down to do with the unincorporated areas of Stark County. Would this moratorium limit an incorporated city to expand the boundaries? There's already been talks about towns near me that wanted to zoom in how many homes outside of the limits. That's just question that I can't answer.
I'm sorry, I'm four foot nine. I shrunk down from being in the army for many years. Came to Stark County in nineteen sixty-two, left it for many, many years and came back. And God be this many things, I think there's an awful lot I don't know about technology. So I came here to learn tonight. I didn't know if data centers were bad. I was going to meetings when we were talking about the solar. And I thought it was deep because a lot of people said they didn't want it. And fifty, sixty years ago, when somebody wanted to do something in the neighborhood, they had to clear it with all the neighbors. And they were allowed to do it as long as it did not negatively impact the neighbors. So now, my front yard is my neighbor's hunted in sixty acre solar field. And I really tried to have good health and this year I've been kind of sick. And I know when I was studying the solar, that there are a lot of toxins in the panels. And they say, "Well, as long as they're sealed, they're fine." And of course, the guys that cut the mow say, "Oh, heck, no, don't worry about hailstorms. We hit those things and cut them and accidentally hit them when we're mowing the fields." So, you know, it's my south wind come right into my house. So I'm afraid of the toxins from all this stuff. I know God gave us beautiful, beautiful earth and he gave it to us to fly. And I came back to Indiana because I want to live between the beams of the born, not between the solar panels. I'm afraid of this data center. I don't know much about it, but everything that I've heard tells me, no way. God, I want to thank you for your beautiful earth, all of your gifts, and make us better students of the gifts you gave us. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ashton Kraft. I'm twenty-two. I worked at the gas station in town like all hours of the day for like sixteen hour shifts. I saw every month their best, their worst. People come in and talk to me for like thirty minutes at times, tell them about their life and what they're struggling with and everything. I was basically like a therapist for ten hours an hour. But I can promise you, no one in this town or anywhere near is going to benefit from this. Even people that would come in from like Chicago and stuff for like going to Bass Lake and whatnot, they're not going to benefit from this because once it comes, the air is going to be polluted. It's going to be a lot worse for them to enjoy their experience here. Thank you.
My name is Beverly Dixon. And first of all, I would like to thank all of you members on Stark County Planning Board Commission. I know it's not easy being a public service, just ask Donald Trump. I live on two fifty east and I would have to give you the reasons of why I do not want this. I want there to be a lifetime being on data centers than Stark County. Thank you.
My name is Matt Gallon. I was curious on why you came up with a five thousand square foot baseline or anything smaller than that you think it have? And as far as the moratorium, I understand that's where we're vote for tonight. I'm for that, but I'm hoping that in the next two, three months, you guys, the public community, if you got raised, that you shut them down and don't allow them to start counting.
Hi, my name is Chris Thomas. Thank you for being here tonight, letting everybody speak on this. While I appreciate the concept of the moratorium, I want to say right out of the gate, I am in favor of a total ban. Total ban. The return on investment isn't bad. If you want to talk about numbers financially, what you, what we're going to be giving up in tax events, property values, everything like that, the returns out there, it's not going to benefit the community whatsoever. You could be dealing with some baseless entity that is halfway around the world, who knows? That is, you have to be operating and treating us like a third world country. These things are going to land in our fields like locusts. They're going to consume every natural resource. And then when that's gone, then what? You're going to have these vacant buildings sitting there doing what? They're going to move on to the next county or the next state and they're going to start the process all over. My wife and I own a body shop, Washington Township. About four years ago, we had to go before the rezumble and to get a permit to operate. Most of their biggest concerns, obviously, when you have a permit, were concerns about our neighbors. How much noise are you going to make? What are your hours of operation? What is the pollution? We're limited to shut down at nine o'clock at night. Now, our neighbors aren't right on top of us, but we still are respectful. We work about eight hours shift and we shut down. Keep the doors closed, summer, winter, whatever, in respect of our neighbors. The data centers, twenty-four seven. You're going to have lights just jet through the sky. You have, I don't care how much filtration the EPA allows on these data centers, on these diesel generators. It might be able to filter out the particulates, but it's not going to filter out the odor. The smell from those diesel generators is going to blow you over. Some of these generators are the size of my living room. And then some of these, these facilities house two hundred of these living room sized generators. So the smell alone from these is going to be phenomenal. So meanwhile, you know, the county is concerned about, you know, my potential pollution for my business and all my noise pollution and whatever. They're even considering turning the other cheek and actually considering allowing something like this? I just can't, you know, hypocrisy just blows me away.
My name is Candace Shills and I live out at Bass Lake on a farm that my grandparents bought in the nineteen forties. And it's beautiful out here. I don't support your data center. But I do have a question for the board about the process. Who's going to make this decision? When is it going to be made? Is the county, are the people in the county ever going to get a chance to vote on? Or whatever comes up as a voting issue? Are we going to vote tonight or are we just going to vote? And I'd just kind of like to hear a little more about what, how this is going to go forward. When are you guys going to make a decision? How will we know that you've made this decision? How can you participate further in making sure that you come up with the right decision?
We're going to answer a lot of those towards the end here, but we're writing notes down. Hopefully we'll have a decision tonight. It is an agenda here to make a vote on whether or the others. So hopefully we get to that point this evening after public comment and we can get some resolution here.
Okay, I should put down a shirt up?
My name is Paul Van Newmark. I actually live in Marshall County, but I own property in Stark County. I sit in a family car and my son still lives on the car. Raised in Stark County and bred with high school here a little years ago than I'd like to think about. I just want to give everybody a little bit of a credit. A few years ago, there's no great solar panels in Marshall County where we live. We were right next door to him. My wife got together with a whole bunch of other people and we put up a protest. We went every meeting. Lost my train of thought. Anyway, I just want to give everybody some encouragement. So far, we've kept all solar panels out of Marshall County. We've got the data centers out of Marshall County. And we've got the carbon capture stuff out of Marshall County. So it is possible to switch stuff out. Just wanted to give everybody a little bit of a credit. Thank you.
Hello, I'm here with my mother-in-law Carol Blastic. I'm Michelle Blastic. And we love Bass Lake. We have been coming here for years, who we've been coming here for now. I think my brother-in-law is actually conceived here as well. It's been a very long time. But my, 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 my point is, is we love Bass Lake and we could never be without Bass Lake. Our families would have been coming here for generations and generations. And without Bass Lake, I don't think our family would be together today because of that.
I first saw Bass Lake in nineteen fifty-seven. And I, my husband Steve was a widow man. And so we took a drive to see where he lived. And I got to Bass Lake and I went to a real lake in Indiana. Because I was thinking of hope and we had strip pits and nothing else. And so Bass Lake is a wonderful place and the people enjoy it that live here, live in Knox, come to Chicago. And I would hate to, I mean, it's low today. So if we had a problem with water that, you know, in the future, we wouldn't have a lake. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Anderson. And I live in Knox. I've went down many, many redwoods. I've researched a lot. And this would not benefit the county in any way, shape or form. And instead of having the moratorium, I'd just say absolutely not. Today's summer, too, and everybody would agree, there is no reason for it.
Hi, my name is John Wire. I moved out here to Stark County twenty-four years ago. I brought my new wife out here, those three children. And I came out to this community because I had researched on this place, on Stark County. Me and a couple of motorcycle friends came out here and did some investigation, checking around. I didn't like the place I liked to be. And I moved in to Pennsyl, Illinois, in the meeting of St. John and Northern Indiana to down here because I liked it. And I raised, helped raise, nurtured children here. And I like the quiet community, that's why I came down here. I don't need all this shit, all this bullshit going on. I can tell you now, I can see the people here saying no. If you have to say no to a data center, it doesn't have to have a reason. We know the reasons. And that's all I have to say.
I'm Bob Doris. Lived here thirty, thirty-five years. I'm really disappointed that there's no representative of the company that wants to operate the data center to explain why they feel it's necessary to put it here or in, or anywhere rural or semi-rural America. You know, if you drive up to Lake, Lake Michigan, go up to the beaches, there are signs around, informational signs about explaining how lake water level has risen in the last quite a few years. Lake Michigan is growing the beaches strongly. Why can't they put them on the lake? There are shuttered steel mills, there are compartments at least in steel mills. And they were, if you drive from Whiting to Michigan City, the whole area, there are places you can put one or two or forty data centers and actually use the excess water there. Why they need to ruin ours? Well, they can, if they, if they're going to leave the lake, they're going to ruin ours too. The best thing about my house, I'm not necessarily for a lot of reasons, is the water quality. I had tested two or three times, three years, and there's nothing in it. It's, it's clean water and I like to do that.
All right, do we have anybody else that would like to speak this evening?
My name is Martin Arlo. And everyone in this room that spoke up covered a lot of good subject matter. And I kind of ran out of something to say, but I have a question I'd like to pose this room. And that is, is there anybody in this room that wants a data center in Stark County?
No.
Is there any yeses?
Hello, my name is Christopher Ryder. I, last year I was riding a motorcycle around San Pierre. Needless to say, I'm pretty disappointed in seeing all the solar panels everywhere. If, I know I have a lot of fellow riders who are out there that when you're riding and you see all that, it's pretty disappointing. And you want to feel like you're out with wind in your hair and the freedom they have. And I feel like it would not be a very good sight to have that additional data center here. I know two solar companies that we do have here in this county, since neither one of them bothered to file their CF ones on time, hopefully trust that those people that bring in a data center are going to do the same thing. I don't think we need it here. And I think it should be a total ban.
Hi, I'm Brian Casey. I've grown up here all my life, here sixty-two years. And the exposed area of this is practically my backyard. And there are so many houses that are just on shallow wells around here. And anybody who's been here for a long time, Howard and I used to be neighbors way back when, have seen Bass Lake, we even walked across it without any issues. I said, "This right here," I says, you know, the, I would say hundreds of houses just in the local area there that are shallow wells and that would have to redo just that aspect alone. The pollution in the air. And I thought, ladies, save me for me. I ride motorcycles too. And I have a lot of friends that ride motorcycles. And you go out, none of these people that live near these solar areas is something they wanted. It's something that somebody else wanted from nowhere near. I said, "So do we want to bring something in our area that nobody in the area wants, but somebody far away is making money on?" I'm totally against it. I will always be against it. And I felt if I did get up here and save my car, then I'm the one sitting in the back being quiet. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Judy Deputy from Lake. Do you folks, thank you, really want to hear this for another year? This is going to be the same stuff. So would it be more efficient right now to just say no? So would it be more efficient right now to just say no?
I think we're going to keep it short this week. I think you guys say just flat out, no. There's your vote. No, here I am, just stop.
I'll take that stuff up here.
Do we have anybody else that wants to speak tonight? All right, thank you, everybody. All right, at this point, I'm going to open it up to the board. I'm looking for a motion to close public comment. We have a motion from Mark to close public comment. We have a second. Second. Motion from Howard. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Public comment is over. Folks, I want to point out something here. This has been a fantastic track. We had no idea what to expect, how many votes would come out. You folks have been amazing and I absolutely applaud you for that. I'll also mention, I did notice that some folks struggled to come up, maybe have fear of public speaking. And that is tough to come up here and do that. And I appreciate your passion in getting up here and doing that. At this point, I'm going to open this up to the board. Entertaining motion to approve resolution 2025-PL-1. At this point, I'm looking for motions from the board to open it up to the board for discussion. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to open it up for discussion.
We have a motion from Mark. We have a second. Second from Dale. All those in favor?
So I'd like to blow off on a tangent. So I went and took a visit to a data center in New Carolina. That means that I walked through, I saw the concerns that everybody's speaking about. My brother actually works for the AP, talks about the power capacity. I'm friends with several electricians that are on that job. On top of that, I just would like everybody to understand that this board does put a lot of time in doing research on stuff that comes in front of us. And I think that by far this is the most thorough board in the county, if you really want to know it. That's something for people to think about. It takes time and energy to do this kind of stuff. When you guys hear all the negatives, you don't get to go out and see site visits for someplace like the Amazon facility, it's pretty impossible unless you know somebody. I absolutely knew quite a few people. So the concerns are valid. There are going to be 500 backup generators to produce tons of emissions, other issues, water issues. I just would like to let everybody know, you're being heard.
I'm not a real good public speaker. Thank you all for being here tonight. Everybody pretty much said the same thing. I think the things, most of us agree, well, I agree with everybody tonight. Health, water, electric, noise, security, infrastructure, fire, EMS, pollution. It's all our concerns, my concerns. I do want to reflect just a little bit, and maybe our counselor can interject and let me know. I don't want to get out of bounds, but I think you folks made a good point. Tonight, we're here to start the process to putting a one-year moratorium. But a lot of you folks entertained the idea of putting a flat ban. And we've heard you. We've all heard you say that. Our legalities tonight, it's not possible that we can do that tonight. But we are taking the first step towards this, to put this moratorium in place. And, oh, one other thing I wanted to bring to light in total transparency. I know we had a company looking for the data center. I have heard, I don't know this for a fact, but I have heard they have backed out and they're no longer looking. So my question to the rest of the board, if you know, did they back out? And is there other companies looking? Do we know? Well, I don't know that to be a fact, ma'am. I just want to put in total transparency. I would like to find that out. I'm just asking you to point out. We don't know.
Why can't you just say no tonight?
That'd be a question for our counselor.
So thank you, Harold. Just a couple of notes. I unfortunately have to advise the board on the legalities of it. I wish I could tell them tonight to just take a vote and you could issue a ban, but I can't do that. There's a process that we have to follow. The planning commission issues a recommendation via a resolution to the county commissioners. The county commissioners then hold a public hearing and approve that into an ordinance, which then becomes law for the county. So this body is a recommending or advisory body. And when we engage in a activity like that, we need to issue public notice on the proposed resolution. The purpose of the meeting this evening was to, before anyone comes forward underneath the existing law, to say, stop, and we want to hear from you. What we heard from you this evening, I have about five pages here. And what is heard creates the basis for future law for us to consider. One of the most important aspects that happened this evening was all of your comments. And there were two speakers that summarized it variously. They said, what happened to the comprehensive plan? At the last meeting, and I've been to Stark County now the past four months. At the last meeting, what was passed to me was the comprehensive plan that you last passed in 2003, which was to be effective and guiding for above 20 years. What I anticipate is going to happen in the next year is we are going to take the input that you've given, the input that you are going to continue to give, and the concerns that were outlined to say, where can we find other opportunities for food? Where are we going to find opportunities for business locations, et cetera? That is where this information is so helpful. So if this body determines no to X, we can decide policy on Y to invite other opportunities in to help support the community. That's a long way of saying to Harold's question, can we take action on the ban tonight? No, we can't. What we can do is a 12-month moratorium. Secondly, if I may, Mr. Chairman, there was also a question raised of, well, why did you allow an opportunity in the proposed resolution for 5,000 square feet or less? In all the research that I did, very much the average data center size here in the United States is about 100,000 square feet. Could have gone 10,000 or 15,000 or 20,000, but frequently it's the 5,000 under that you find as a complimentary center that's going to assist a hospital or a business, et cetera. So what we didn't want to do was limit that. But the other thing that we did in this proposed ordinance that's going to go perhaps to the commissioners, is it's all encompassing and saying anything related thereto to a data center, whether it's water cooling systems, battery systems, the backup generator systems. It's all encompassing in there so that there is a catch-all. What we did want to, at least my recommendation to the board at the last month's meeting, was to keep that carve-out in case there are little business opportunities that arise that are complimentary to their use and the main intention is not data center purposes. Hopefully, I've answered the legal questions that were raised here this evening.
Thank you, Nathan. Break out. Anybody else on the board? Well, or I think these people came here for something tonight. Do we have anything to proceed with the vote?
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the moratorium and pass it on to the commissioners.
Okay, we have a motion. And I'll second that motion. All right, we have a motion from Quinn and a second from Howard. All those in favor? I'll add. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, now I do want to have our attorney quickly just go over what happens next.
So the next step, thank you, Mr. Chairman, is there's a resolution here. The board members have formally motioned second and approved it. This now is conveyed to the county commissioners with a suggested ordinance. You'll need to publish up, file the guidance of your legal counsel at a next regularly scheduled meeting to then vote on that proposed ordinance. So that is the next step. Once the county commissioners approve it, it is then county ordinance slash law and imposed into practice.
Thank you, Harold.
I've got a question. On that, since you have that moratorium, can the commissioner override it and say we don't want it?
It's at their discretion. We're in advisory position at this point.
You may say no.
They could, yes. I don't know what they have to say. I don't represent them.
Understand, this now will go to the commissioners, which I said. And then we will set a date for another similar meeting for them to pass or deny.
I just want to thank everyone for taking time this evening and sharing all of your thoughts and concerns. And just let everyone know that Eric, we come here, we're actually discussing what everyone says is needed. We appreciate your time.
Second, and all those in favor?
He told me, he told me, yeah, the officer's up on the air. Officer's like, you're seeing him that bad? He's like, he's up on the ground.
All shut down?
Yep, absolutely.